Time is 7:32. I call the March 4th meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please rise for the pledge floor flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Manager Johnson.
Ms. Thompson.
President.
Ms. Segal-Morris.
President.
Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
Ms. Scher.
Present.
Mr. Carlson.
Present.
Mr. Finer.
Present.
And Mr. Stump.
Present.
Seven members present. We have a quorum. Community announcements. This is the portion of the meeting where our members of council, the mayor, members of the public can tell us about upcoming events or other community announcements going on around town. Any community announcements this evening? Hearing none, we will close that portion of the agenda and move on to public comment. If you have a public comment this evening, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes per item. Any public comment this evening? All right, nice and easy. We'll now consider the consent agenda dated March 4th, 2025, which includes three items: approval of the minutes dated February 18th, 2025, event permit for Yardley Farmers Market Saturdays from 5:30 to 11:22 in Buttonwood Park, an event permit for AGF Ride for Autism on 9/6/25 on various borough streets. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Pull the minutes, please.
Sure. Any other requests to remove an item? I would entertain a motion to approve items B and C.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Councilperson Finer, seconded by Councilperson Carlson. Discussion from council?
Yes, Madam President. I reviewed the minutes. I found a couple-
Just on items B and C right now, and then-
Well, I'm so sorry. I got too excited. No, then, no.
Okay, excellent. So, any questions on those from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, now we'll consider approval of the minutes dated February 18th. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Segal-Morris, seconded by Councilperson Scher. Mr. Applebaum.
I forgot. No, I'm just kidding you. Okay, there's just a couple minor issues. Under community announcements number four, Birdtown representative is not Julianne, but Julie. And also, I don't know if anyone really cares, but I think I saw my name spelled wrong. It's A-P-P-E-L. It's not at the top, but, oh God, I lost it. I apologize. Let me see if I can find it.
We'll find it.
Okay, and the third thing would be... I had it marked up. Let me see if I can find it. That's it. Thank you.
All right, so those two items, I will let Mary Ann McLean know about those. Any other comments on the minutes? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Police chief's report, please.
Yes, ma'am. I have service statistics for the month of February 2025. In February 2025, police department handled 656 calls for service, issued six parking tickets, deducted 90 traffic stops, resulting in 60 traffic citations, investigated five motor vehicle accidents, made two arrests, none of which were for DUI. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief Kelly. You have before you the finance report from March 4th. Are there any issues, questions, comments? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. Moving on to the manager's report, please.
Our 2024 audit has been complete, and we submitted it to DCED today. We should have additional information on the grant anticipation loan for the Phase III sidewalk project at the next meeting. Attended a preliminary kickoff for the next round of elevation, which includes two houses. We're on the home stretch of our final... We're on the home stretch of the final house of our current elevation project. This last property should be done within the next couple of months. Had a meeting with Councilman Finer about ongoing Public Works projects, including Judy's Garden and the Trailhead. There is a stormwater pipe that most know that has failed in the parking lot of the Griss Mill. There was a collapse. It's being worked on. The work will resume once the rain ends tomorrow. Right-to-knows, we have five for the month. There's one still in appeal. There was no building permits for February, five zoning permits. I attended the 224 zoning hearing board for 25 North Delaware. Rich received the request of variances. And that's my report.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, very nice report. I always enjoy reading your reports. They're much more thorough than what you tell everybody, but-
Thank you.
They're very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Johnson. And you also have a resolution under your manager's report, which is Resolution 24-02, disposition of records. This is pursuant to our disposition policy. We usually get requests to read what is being disposed of pursuant to that policy, so I am going to do that. It includes the 2022 right-to-know requests, which we have a policy just to retain two years, invoices, trust certificates, tax claims, and copies of Birkenheimer Report 2017, so our policy is the past seven years, and then bank statements from 2017, past seven years on that as well. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 25-02?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Scher, seconded, I think that was Councilperson Carlson? Any discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else, Manager Johnson?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We have a stand-in for Mr. Foley tonight, Melanie from Remington, Virginia. I didn't catch your last name.
It's Melanie Aronis.
Welcome. Do you have an engineer's report this evening?
Yes, it's been issued to council. It was in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on it.
Any questions on the engineer's report?
No, I have a comment. Please tell Patrick, "An awesome report," as always.
I'll pass that along. Thank you. I'll pass that along to him.
Any questions on the engineer's report?
One question on the MS4 inspections that happened on 25. We haven't gotten a report yet, but was... Do we feel like there were any major issues in the walk-in?
No, we did very well.
I just have one thing that you might want to check yours, whoever typed it in. It says that for Yardley, that you had a meeting, and I think it was October, but it was 2026. So you can't have had it on something in the future. No, it looks like somebody made a typo.
All right, yep, we'll-
We already got billed for it, too.
Yep, we'll make a note of that, and we can revise that for the next-
I see that. 9/25/2026. Good.
Yes.
Councilperson Applebaum and Councilperson Scher, you have a future career in copyrighting. Alrighty. All right, we'll close out the engineer's report then. Solicitor's report, please.
Before you this evening is a resolution to approve, adopt, and basically provide no objection to an amendment to an Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan proposed by Lower Mayfield Township. The Pennsylvania DEP has requested that we pass a resolution on this matter. Essentially, Lower Mayfield Township is selling its public sanitary sewer system to Aqua PA Wastewater Incorporated. As a part of that sale, all agreements, contracts, and easements that are currently held by Lower Mayfield Township will be assigned to PA Aqua. So it's really just a formality. It's Lower Mayfield Township's that's taking the action. We just need the approval in the resolution to show that there's no objection. The Planning Commission did vote to approve this back on December 12th.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-03, Act 537 Special Study and Plan?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Councilperson Scher, seconded by Councilperson Segal-Morris. Any discussion or further questions on this?
I have a question. The only question is, the sale went through like two years ago. Wouldn't this normally be something that would be done before a sale?
So through the, basically the PA DEP, there's a series of reviews and review letters that go through, and then also there's a public comment period, which requires advertisement. So I did see that they actually initially put this out to the public to take a look at. It looks like back in February of 2022, and then they did a re-advertising in December 18th of 2024. So I think in response to some of those review letters, there was changes made to the actual plan that was submitted, and that's the delay.
Okay.
I just want to... I had a resident contact me and say he thought the Municipal Utilities Act prevented the sale.
So I did review the study and all of the review letters that were provided, and there was no indication that there was any impediment to the sale.
Thank you.
Any other questions? From council first? Any questions from the public on this? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Oak Mayor's report.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to council member reports. Councilperson Segal-Morris.
Michelle and I attended the Experience Yardley Board Meeting yesterday, where they are moving right along with their mom plans and their-
Music off main?
Yes, music off main, sorry. Not moms. And also working with the grant for the Visit PA and trying to attract more people to overnight visits in the area. And what else did they say?
They were talking about Visit Yardley that they're working on also, and they're trying to find out how to let hotels in the area and different places know about Yardley to tell, you know, customers and whatnot. And I suggested that maybe they could look into... Tell me?
TripAdvisor.
TripAdvisor, thank you. Like, the little owl, you know? That's all it remembers, a little icon. But, yeah.
Are they connected with Visit Bucks already?
Who?
Experience Yardley.
I think that's-
They're working on that now.
Is part of the Visit Bucks?
Okay.
I think they're working on that now.
What did I just say? Visit Bucks. They have a whole hospitality committee, I thought, that worked with hotels.
I think that's part of the whole grant, because then we boost overnight stays, which boosts the occupancy or that hotel whatever tax. So I think that's all glued together.
Okay, so that's already on their radar, then?
And they're working on, I guess, breathing some life into... That's my interpretation, sorry. Into Second Saturday, because if you look on the website, it says Second Saturday, and you might have one or two stores, and then it says check with the, you know, with the businesses. And I said, that's kind of hard for people to be running around asking, "Are you participating?" So, you know, so they're going to be working on, you know... Because Jeff Bueller, when he did the Experience Yardley, he used to bring me like a sheet this long to put on a bulletin board with all the businesses for that day and what their special event, special, anything that they were doing for that particular day.
I remember a chocolate crawl in 2017. I think they had like 13 businesses that participated in the chocolate crawl. It was awesome.
Yeah.
So let's bring that back. All right, thank you so much, both. Councilperson Finer.
Okay, well, a lot of good things happening in Public Works. I think we'll summarize progress on North Main Street, Phase III. Just kind of like technical details of getting these letters out, signatures. Everyone's very supportive, and we supplied the list of emails and information we collected on the Public Works team to Paula, and so her office now is sharing the same information. It's a live document, so if we make changes, you can just, you know, view it again. And so I feel good about that. And then the big news, of course, is that we received this grant, the MDFMTF grant through the DCED, for $278,712. So I thank you. That's a big deal. That's a lot of money. Thank you for those of you on council who voted to support that. I think it just kind of goes to show that you just have to keep filling the pipeline. You never know if you're going to get these grants. You never know what they're looking at on their end. You have to keep applying. So that's really good news. Now, does that mean we can start on the Dolington Extension? And I'll just also, for the benefit of the public, mention, this is the part of Dolington that goes from where the borough line is, so it's relatively close to where Taylorsville Road/North Main Street is. It's to extend that sidewalk to the corner where there's already going to be the North Main Street sidewalk, Phase III, and a Taylorsville Road sidewalk that Lower Mayfield is working on, coming out from that spot, and a crosswalk. So this is to add flashing beacons to that crosswalk, help calm traffic for especially when people are crossing, and a little strip of connection that connects thousands of houses up Dolington. I know all of you have heard me say that many times, but for the benefit of the public. So we now are funded for the construction of the project. Now, what's difficult about this is they only allow 10% of the construction to be paid for engineering. So the construction cost is 248, almost 249,000. The engineering cost is 168,000. So this would pay for $24,800 of that engineering cost, so the shortfall is somewhere around $144,000. So we're not going to start this right away, but we are more than halfway toward, far more than halfway towards the funding that we need to do this project. We already have an application in with LSA for the design part of this project. Hopefully, we'll get that. And what I am going to suggest that we do is go ahead and have Pat and RVE start to work, because they can, once this grant is approved, they can start working on the $25,000 or so portion of this, which will pay for some initial surveying and design work. And then if we need to apply for another grant, we will show that we've got this grant, and we've got work done towards it, and we've got more steps done. And the more you have done, those who decide who gets the grants, they look more favorably upon projects that look like they're going to be completed, because nobody wants to give a grant that's just going to sit there forever. So this is a perfect example of why it works to apply for grants. I'm very happy that we got that grant, and it's just really, in my view, a matter of time until we can actually get this project under construction. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilperson Carlson.
The only thing I have to report is the short-term lodging ordinance, the second draft of it, went to the Planning Commission, and on February 13th, they had a meeting where they went through it line by line. I was there. There's no, they don't have any major changes to it, but some cosmetic stuff. So we'll have another small revision when we get that back from them, probably, hopefully, at the end of next week after their meeting. And then we'll try to get the minor changes on that and get that ready for the first weekend in April, hopefully. So I had-
Thank you. Councilperson Applebaum.
Yes, thank you. Just a few things. First of all, at the last council meeting, when Representative Brian, I hope I remember the legislature's associates-
You need a mic. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Start over.
Let's start again. All right, thank you, Madam President. At the last council meeting, Brian Brashan from Gilmore Associates laid out the plan for the sewer pipe upgrades, and I wanted to make sure that the EAC and any other interested parties, including the Shade Tree Committee, were involved in some way. So I reached out to him and asked if we could do a walking tour to see potentially what trees may be affected along the route. He and Christina Vest... How do you say it? Vestrekka? Ventreska, thank you, are going to get back to me with a date, and then I'll let everyone know, and we can walk the route and get an idea of how this may affect any old growth trees and how we can deal with that to mitigate some of the damage, if there is any. Okay, number two, YBA had a meeting tonight. We talked a lot because of, you know, I'm interested in community and economic development. There was a number of interesting ideas floated around about how to increase, you know, visiting Yardley, and I know that Michelle talked a little bit about that with the Experience Yardley, and she was also at the meeting, and she can talk about that. But they also firmed up some of their events. I also attended this week a Birdtown introductory Zoom meeting with representatives of the EAC, just to make sure that we're on track to promote this and to get the community involved as far as the details of this very important, you know, bird initiative, bird and natural environmental initiative. So that's happening. I also, this week, visited Terracycle in Trenton, New Jersey via the DRGC, the Delaware River Basin Commission. Two of our Yardley group, one's a company Spearhead Global, and then Spearhead Project Earth, are partners with our share waters, which is a subset of the Delaware River Basin Commission. And what we did is we toured the facilities to find out about new ways of how companies are dealing with waste and recycling, and also to, we participated in a roundtable to discuss common issues and share resources with each other. And my computer died, so I don't know what else is left, but that's probably enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Scher.
Nothing to report.
Oh, are we back?
So- Just that, the DRBC, one of the bigger issues that we dealt with, because it is the Delaware River Basin Commission, we talked a lot about the problem with microplastics and salt getting into the river through our sewer systems, and we'll have another discussion over the next couple of months about, you know, suggestions to municipalities of how we can deal with that and mitigate some of those issues before damages the Delaware River more, because it does affect our natural wildlife and the fish. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilperson Scher, you didn't have a report, right? Okay. Councilperson Stump.
All I have to report is that we got the Christmas tree taken down before March 1st, so I consider that a win.
It looks good. Excellent. Thank you.
That was my drop-dead date. I was like, guys, if it's still up in March, that's probably going to not... If we start to, if the trees start to turn pink and we still have a Christmas tree up, it probably doesn't look too great. But it was fun having it up for a little while longer, and thank you for the volunteers that worked hard on that. We weren't just, they weren't just being lazy. The stakes were frozen into the ground, and so there was a long period of time where they couldn't get it out of the ground. But then, as the weather started to warm up, we kind of went back and forth and made sure that happened. So anyway, nothing else noteworthy.
All-town things. Thank you. Any discussion items this evening that weren't submitted for the packet? Okay, other business, item A, vote to authorize Curtin and Hiefner to review and amend proposed event ordinance. Councilperson Segal-Morris?
I spoke to Mr. Andrew. I forget if that was yesterday or the day before at this point. It was yesterday. He estimated it would be, take four to five hours to review that ordinance, and that it would not likely require frequent changes, as has been speculated.
So the question we had was whether we can not have so much information in the ordinance and just have it say, like, refer back to policy and just, like, provide a link to the policy that would be somewhere else, and then we could update that policy as much as we wanted without having to amend the ordinance?
Like I was just, just to jump in there, because I've been thinking about this since our last meeting. I think the way you could do it is you, in the ordinance, you say that there's a schedule of policies and fees. And if you wanted to, you could actually specify the actual policies, such as advance notice, fees for noncompliance, et cetera, or penalties, fees. And then, just like we do with our building permit fees, we have the annual list of those fees that we vote on each year. We would vote on this, just to prove, this way, if there are any changes, we could change it right then and there, even if you wanted to change it along the way. Of course, nothing stops us from changing it. Basically, that would be voted on, and it would be published on the website and available at Borough Hall. And this way, the ordinance could be, you know, general... It could be a shell that points to that, and that would allow, and because, you know, who knows? Whatever the parameters are, there may be things we're not thinking of. This seems to me a way to happy medium, where you have the ordinance that supports it, you have a policy, it's been voted on, and yet it's flexible. So is that something that is-
In our discussion at the working session, yeah, we were like, is that legal?
So, you know, certainly with regard to the fees, you could refer to a fee schedule. You could also, you know, within reason, sort of amend, you know, have it refer to the actual application that would be amended. But if you're looking at actual violations and penalties or the substance of the policy, that has to be done via ordinance. We can't have that just like broadly in a policy that we're constantly amending.
So you could put like the violation if you don't follow it. But if you have, like, let's say, advance notice, or the number of people, right, is 50, or the advance notice is, what, like 60 days or something? So that part you could refer to in a policy, and you could say that the policy that's passed by council.
If the ordinance itself had like broad confines, like between 25 and 50, please see the policy, you could certainly do that. But when you get into the actual penalties for a violation, that has to be set forth in the ordinance, and that's not something that could just be in a, you know, like a policy manual that's constantly amended.
So the way in which penalties are determined would be in the ordinance, but the amount of the penalties could be in the fee schedule?
No, the amount of the penalties has to be in the ordinance.
The fees to apply could be in a fee schedule.
Yeah, that you could have in a fee schedule.
And then the application itself could be updated as we wished.
That's correct, as long as the ordinance broadly covers, you know, the general information that would be in there, and then, you know, the application has amended and shown.
Well, what items could we have in the policy versus in the ordinance? So I understand the fee, the penalty amount has to be in the ordinance.
Right.
What about the specific, all the specific parameters that we have that are, let's say, numeric in nature? Can those be on a schedule?
Again, if it's like a substantive change in actual policy, that- Again, if it's like a substantive change in actual policy, that has to be in an ordinance. So you can't just, you know, kind of off the cuff, sort of amend this policy and just keep changing it online and referring to it.
Let's say the ordinance says there's a minimum of people to be considered for, you know, an event is considered a minimum of people as listed in the schedule.
I think as long as we put some numbers on it, like between this amount, I think you could get away with that, but it has to be covered in the ordinance.
What's the difference between putting a range versus just referring to?
Because you have passed an ordinance that authorizes a policy that has this range, you know, between events between this size and this size, you know, or subject to these requirements, please see the policy. So you have passed an ordinance that covers it, and it's similar to a fee schedule where you're just, you know, sort of changing the schedule out.
You'd want to go essentially below, like you might want to say 25, minimum of 25 people, and then in the policy it says, might say 50 or above. Is that kind of what, the way you're-
I would have a high and low in the actual ordinance, yeah.
A high and low, but why would, our actual ordinance doesn't have a maximum. Why would you have a maximum in, you get what I'm saying?
Right.
Over 50 people.
You have-
Over 50 but under 1,000. It's just over 50.
You're saying in the-
That's not what he means.
Oh, yeah. No.
That 50 number, the cutoff could be 50. If you said 20 to 60, it could be 50.
You just need to have a rate, yeah.
Rate for the minimum.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But that's, in my mind, that's not really saving you that much, because I don't think it's just the number, 50, it is the variable, that we're trying to make it simpler. It's more, you know, when you get in there, it's the kinds of events that fall under this, and the events that might have different parameters around it. We're trying to put all that into this ordinance, and we were hoping we could do that in a separate document.
But I think you could, like, do, like, list out 16 different types of events that would be covered and say, including but not limited to, for a full list, see the policy or something like that.
Right, and that's what I mean as far as a range. Like, as long as you've covered it broadly, you could get more specific in a policy, and that's okay. You just, again, the key to these types of ordinances and the concern is always going to be First Amendment concerns, and you have to regulate all forms of speech regardless of the expressive activity equally. So, for example, if you have, you know, an exception for one type of activity or not another, that's where you start running into issues.
You're looking for a directive to draw this up, and essentially, are you looking to create as much of a, within your experience of what would be considered a solid ordinance, but allows that flexibility? Is that what you're looking for us to pass tonight?
Yeah, so I, you know, right now, you're not passing the-
To have in your policy?
Correct. So right now, you're not passing the actual ordinance, you're just authorizing me to draft it and kind of amend the draft that's already there, you know, and then we'll come back to authorize the actual ordinance once I've put it together. I have talked to Paul, I've talked to Kim, so I have general confines of what you're looking to do. But we can certainly have conversations in my drafting of the ordinance.
Well, but what I mean is that, I understand what you're doing tonight, but the ordinance that you're drafting tonight, that we're going to spend four or five hours on-
Yeah.
I want to be clear, if that's the ordinance where you're maximizing the opportunity to have some parts split out as policy-
Yep.
-versus putting it all in the ordinance?
Yeah, no, understood. Yep, that'll be the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think maybe watching the 30-minute discussion we had at our working session, you might be able to thread the needle a little better.
Yeah.
I also would welcome, like, those who have specifics, like, I think these four categories under the current draft could be done in this way and send it to Andrew before he starts working would probably save the Borough time and energy here.
Yeah, and I can reach out, and we can have a call, you know, once I've kind of looked at it before I spend the time and energy of actually writing it out.
Any other questions or comments on this?
And I'm just going to throw it out there, because my thoughts are not completely-
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm sorry. I know we have been trying to draw up an ordinance, kind of like saying, okay, well, I found one, and let's copy it, and then write it up, and then give it to you to actually turn it into a legal ordinance.
Right.
So is it, I think, I'm not speaking for, I'm not, I think I'm speaking for some of the people here, that it seems like the Borough Council is always trying to save a buck. So I'm, no, I'm not, sorry. So I know they try to, you know, minimize, I guess, your time.
Yeah, and I-
Does it take you more time when we do it that way? Or would it be better if we just gave you really general and kind of just explained it, and then you could do it?
So I would say generally, it's going to save you money and save, you know, the time that I bill if I'm given just broadly, you know, bullet points on what you're looking to accomplish, and then I draft the ordinance initially. The problem is, if I go through an ordinance that you've already drafted, you know, depending on the length, the complexity, I don't know where some of these provisions have come from. So I have to sort of double-check the ordinance for internal consistency, and then also, you know, make sure that each of those provisions is valid. Whereas if I drafted it, you know, I would start-
Be faster and easier for you.
Right.
That's, okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
I've reviewed red lines on several of the ordinances that we've sent to Curtin and Heffner in the past that we've done off of drafts, and it varies. Sometimes it saves us a lot of money, and sometimes it actually, I think, ends up costing us a little more because we maybe got a draft from somewhere that doesn't have a good solicitor, and they missed things. I think in this case, though, with the, can we do it this way with hyperlinks to a policy or something like that, I think we're all actually looking for the same thing in saving money. So the question is, are we saving money now by just going off of this draft from another municipality? Are we saving money down the road, because we don't have to reopen the ordinance every time we want to make small updates? So I think, I think both comments are of the same spirit, they're just said in a different way. And I think it would be a good model that we could build off of for other ordinances if it works in this case with the linking back to policies.
Yeah, you know, and one of the issues is, it's not that, you know, necessarily an example that you pull from another municipality that it's not a good ordinance or it's not a good example. It's just that, you know, laws change, the case law changes, and these ordinances sit around for a long period of time, and they kind of exist until challenged, you know, so it's-
They're old sometimes.
Right.
Okay.
I have another due diligence question here.
Sure.
Just before we spend money. And I know we've been down a lot of conversation about this, and I appreciate that conversation. I think we wind up with something better by doing it. But we approve all events as an act of council.
Right.
Okay? If we have an ordinance that says all events greater than X size or the range of sizes of the minimum must be approved by council, failure to, based on council, on the policy, whatever, okay? I know that we just went through this whole thing, but failure to holding an event without approval by council is subject to these fines, okay? Now, council gets to approve all the events, which we're already doing. If the event violates the policy, well, when it's put forth, either it won't be put forth before us, or we'll be told this violates our pilot policy, we get to decide. If we say no and they hold the event anyway, penalties and fines. Or if they don't come to us, penalties and fines. How is that different than writing this whole thing up, and then they violate it, and penalties and fines? You get what I'm saying?
I don't think there's-
Yeah, and I-
They can violate it if there's not an ordinance to violate.
Right, and, you know, maybe, you and I, we could have a call offline to kind of go through your concern with it. You know, the issue is, once the ordinance is drafted, that's the actual law. You know, and you have to have objective standards that are notified to the public or else they cannot get in trouble for violating the ordinance. Also, any ambiguity in an ordinance is interpreted in favor of the person that allegedly violated. So you just have to have clear criteria in the ordinance so that they know what the expectation is and what they need to follow. So I do think broadly, I think we could put a skeleton around this that covers your concern. You just have to make sure that you're providing the direction.
No, I guess my confusion around it is that, so that means that for X number of years we've been doing this, ever since I've been here, we've been doing this, and basically we've been doing like theater, because it doesn't actually mean any. All these approvals for events have meant nothing all these years. That's essentially, it can't be both. So, and that's okay, if that's what it is, and we're going to solidify it, I'm okay with that, but-
Well, so there is an ordinance that exists from 2020. There was a procession and a semblance ordinance that was drafted, and I think that broadly pointed to a special event application that would have to be filled out. And it did have, under the First Amendment, you know, the concerns and the outs that you would need as far as insurance requirements, you know, like a response to a breaking news event and that type of thing. So you can have a broad outline, but you just have to have the direction of what the expectation is, where to go, and generally, what you've authorized in the ordinance. But we can have a call about it, and we can go through the examples before I-
I think our gold standard with communication to the Borough, I mean, we can have the best website in the world, but our ordinances should be the bible of the town. Like, any rules and policies for the town should really be in our ordinances so a resident can know. If I have a question, I can go there, and I can have confidence that my answer's going to be in there somewhere. And that's why, in some ways, why we're looking at the short-term lodging, right? What we have on the books is confusing, people are confused. We have for Mr. Fork, where people are confused about the process, and they go here and there's nothing. And so I think having some things that are unofficial policy and some things that are in the law is just another layer of confusion for our residents. That's how I see this anyways.
I think the other part that maybe we're seeing in this conversation is that having the ordinance would, that just allows us for better planning when it comes to public safety resources, and also then it covers private businesses having events like in their lots or on their grounds, and so that we're aware of that. Because I don't think right now that, according to like the event that was held at St. Andrews, they didn't feel like they needed to let us know. They didn't think they needed a permit or to even let us know. I guess officially, they didn't need a permit. So I think that's what this was also going to cover.
I think the ordinance gives everybody in the Borough uniformity and consistency. It sounds like in the past, if we had an ordinance, or whether it was a policy, I don't know, that the council would decide, and it sounds like sometimes maybe it would indicate that it wasn't supposed to happen, that we were supposed to say no, and then that maybe council would say, well, we'll make an exception. And I think this kind of makes that not possible, because if, once you make an exception, then, you know, it's not fair.
And we all have to agree on, you know, what things in the Borough are necessary to have laws around and what isn't. Like, I think we're all going to have different theologies around that, and that's totally okay. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, so we are asking for a authorization to, for Curtin and Heffner to review and amend the proposed event ordinance. Is there a motion? Or did we already get a motion?
No.
I don't think so. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion is made by Councilperson Segal Mars, seconded by Councilperson Scherer. Further, any further discussion from council or from the public? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right, if there is nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session where we will be discussing a personnel matter. There will be no vote after the executive, I cannot talk, executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded, meeting adjourned at 8:30.